Welcome, everybody, to the February 24th, 2014 School Board Meeting. Glad you're all here. We're going to start the meeting today with a spotlight on the 2014 Boys Nordic Ski Team, and we'll kick that off with Andy Ewald, our Athletic Director.
Well, wait a second, there's a few more coming in. Is that it? Okay. Thanks, Nancy. I'm Andy Ewald, I'm the District's Athletic Director. Thanks for having us tonight. I am going to pass this on to Doug Peterson, our Head Coach, and he'll come up and talk about the season and about the boys, and just kind of give a summary of how things were. So Doug, would you please come up?
Thank you, Andy. It's really good to be in front of the School Board again. It's been a few years since we've been up here, you know, so...but it's good to be back. I thought I'd just go over some of the achievements of this team. Just looking at them now, you know, they're a pretty sharp-looking group here.[75.31][75.31](Laughter). And they wore pretty much the same outfit with a little variation of color at the State Meet banquet, so they were pretty sharp. But we started out the season by winning the Holiday Relays, which is the second-largest race in the state for high school racers. Then we went on up to Masabi, which is the largest race in the country for high school Nordic racers, and up there we took fifth. Then we came back to St. Louis Park, we did our conference championship race, and we won that, conference champions of the Twin City Nordic and North Suburban. It's a combined conference of 12 teams. Then we went to the section race, and you know, you have to win the section to get to the state, and there's some pretty...there's some powers in there, Edina, Hopkins, Southwest, teams like that, Armstrong. And we won that race pretty convincingly. From there, we went up to the State Meet. Hadn't really been ranked any higher than fourth most of the year, and these guys put together a pretty good race, and we ended up second up there, second in the State Meet.[144.69][144.69](Applause). And if you combined...they only score four skiers at the State Meet, and if you combine the total times of our top seven skiers, they were the best team in the state of Minnesota.[161.62][161.62](Applause). But not only are they good athletes, but they're good academically also. Our conference recognizes academics, as we do at the State Meet. This team won a Silver Award, which is a 3.5 average grade point or higher.[185.37][185.37](Applause). Our conference also recognizes academics, and they are the academic conference champion of the North Suburban-Twin City Nordic Conference with a combined total of 3.81.[203.95][203.95](Applause). Five of our seven skiers were all conference, we had one honorable mention. And right now, I think what I'd like to do is thank those people that were really important. Andy Ewald, for one, has been very supportive of our Nordic team. Without the help of our Athletic Department, this team does not sit here as it does today. So, thank you, Andy.[234.81][234.81](Applause). And if the parents of our skiers that are here tonight could stand up, please. This really is the heart and soul of this team.[247.31][247.31](Applause). Well, thank you. Thank you very much. They do a lot of work for us, they're a very dedicated group, and thank you again, all of you. What I'd like to do now is just introduce the team, starting with our youngest skier first, ninth grader Jackson Sokolowski, if you could come up here and stand, please.[273.83][273.83](Applause). Alternate from 10th grade Jens Albright.[288.77][288.77](Applause). Alternate Jackson Aylers, 10th grader.[301.13][301.13](Applause). State Meet competitor from the 10th grade Ben Chong.[311.83][311.83](Applause). State Meet competitor from the 10th grade Conrad Phelan.[321.83][321.83](Applause). From the 11th grade, State Meet competitor Liam Schmelzy.[331.83][331.83](Applause). State Meet competitor from the 11th grade Sean Cork.[341.83][341.83](Applause). State Meet competitor from the 11th grade Sam Olson.[352.83][352.83](Applause). And the only senior that we have on this team, really the backbone of this team, Nick Sokolowski.[366.22][366.22](Applause). I'd also like to introduce one of my assistants, John Deistie is here. I've worked with him for many years, he's been a part of a lot of this success, so I'd like to have John come up also. John Deistie.[386.53][386.53](Applause). This is the second-place State Meet competitors, seven of the best.[397.53][397.53](Applause).
Sure, let's... Like three or four are in the front, or the tall people in the back?
And I'll go in the front, because I'm not one of the tall people. I know my dogs.
They're all squeezing together. It's my better.
This is Coach Doug.
I'm going to go first, folks. At three. One, two, three. You look closer to Andy, under the light. I mean, I'll corner the light.
You should scoot up a little bit.
There you go. One more time. One, two, three, at me. Okay.
Everybody stay...
We'll stay.
Parents can shut up. (Laughter). Thank you all. Very well done. Very proud. Very proud.[435.53][435.53](Applause).
Thank you all so much. We are very, very proud of you. Your parents are more proud, but we're really a close second.[439.53][439.53](Laughter).
I just want to add to that, too. You guys, we are awfully proud of you for winning at state, but the other thing we're really proud of you for is for being Academic All-Stars. That is just one...[451.34][451.34](Applause).
So, we thank you for coming. You are all welcome to stay if you want, but we understand you probably have studies and things to do, so you're free to go if you want, and we will not be offended, all right? So, this is the formal call to order of the School Board Meeting, and on our agenda tonight, we have approval of the agenda, open forum, the superintendent's report, discussion items, freight rail, light rail update, the 2014-2015 school calendar discussion, we are striking the quarterly financial update from our posted agenda and amending it without that. And then we have our consent agenda and our action agenda, which there is no action for tonight, communications and transmittals, and adjournment. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as read?
So moved.
And seconded by Karen? All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Equal 5-0 tonight. So, the first item on the agenda is open forum, and I have one yellow slip. If there's anyone else who wants to speak in open forum, there should be yellow slips in the back. And this is Bridget...is it Feimester?
Femester.
Femester? And our...you're welcome to speak in our...
No, I'm just...[529.16][529.16](Laughter).
And as you probably know, our open forum guidelines are three minutes. Okay.
Good evening, and thank you Superintendent Metz and Board Chair and Board Members. I'm Bridget Femester, and I am the Principal Secretary at Susan Lindgren. I'm also the Lead Caps Negotiator. And this is our attorney, Greg Corwin. Terek Johnson.
Sandy Armanderos.
Janet Pickford.
Dee Gruning.
We thought we'd wear black today, just to give you guys a break of all the orange.[573.16][573.16](Laughter). We're here because we want you to know a few things. One, who we are, what we do, and that we've been trying to negotiate since last May with no success. We have some handouts for you. Abby, she'll pass them out for us. Thanks, Abby. This process has been very onerous, and it has required that we have our attorney with us and involved in every conversation we have at the district negotiating team meetings. To this date, we haven't talked money, wages, that's never been discussed. We're still working on aligning our Bjorkland studies with the job descriptions. This is also the same study that the district reported to the state for pay equity, so we're still trying to get our jobs aligned with that. We'd also like you to know that we filed for mediation, and we encourage the district negotiating team to participate in the mediation and to come to a fair settlement smoothly and quickly. Please help us with moving forward with this process, and we just want to thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming in and letting us know where you're standing at the moment, okay? Is there anyone...and we know you do good work. Never...I don't...that's never been an issue that's come before the board is any concern, so I want you to know that we appreciate everything you do out in the schools, because we know how much it matters. You're our first...often our first contact with the community, and so that's really important, so thank you for that. Anyone else who wants to speak at open forum? Okay, then moving on, on our agenda, we have discussion items, and the first item up is freight rail, light rail update, and we're going to hear from, I believe it's Jim Alexander, and you're...are you...Jim, why don't you tell us here? Because I don't think you're a member of the Met Council, but you're associated with the work that the Met Council is doing, as I recall.
Yes, Madam Chair, I can give you a little background on who I am. Wait till the folks...
We'll give it 30 seconds to clear.
Oh, none at all. No problem.
Yes, Madam Chair, my name is Jim Alexander. I'm a professional engineer, and I work for Metro Transit, actually, which is a subsidiary of the Met Council, and I've been with the Council since about 2000. And my background is I've worked as design manager before being on this project, design manager on Central Corridor, and I was also manager of the fare collection system for the smart card system that you see on the buses, the blue footballs if you ride the bus. So, I'm a design director on the Southwest LRT, and I'm essentially lead of the design effort. So, I have a PowerPoint to present, to understand that you folks wanted to kind of get a little background on the current proposal by Trans Systems. So, maybe before I get into that, I'd like to give you a little background. Back in October of last year, staff had made a recommendation to our corridor management committee, and a corridor management committee is made up of various policymakers throughout the corridor. So, for example, the mayor of St. Louis Park is on that. Normally, Jake Spano is serving for the mayor on that, and sometimes Tom Harmoning. But the...we presented a recommendation for the overall project scope, which included a shallow LRT tunnel. I don't know if you recall, some of you, I presented that to you probably last summer timeframe, and that would entail keeping freight rail essentially where it is, going up through the Kennelworth Corridor. And subsequent to that, the governor and other policymakers said, "Let's have a pause for a moment, and let's just take a look at things. We want to have a fresh look at the freight rail. There's also a water resources evaluation of how the shallow tunnels might impact the water resources through the Kennelworth Corridor." And then there was also a tree study that we did, the project office did. But the two studies that were done by independent consultants, the water resources by Burns and McDonnell, and the freight rail study by Trans Systems, were done by independent consultants. We essentially hired them, working in consultation with both cities of St. Louis Park and Minneapolis and the county on the scope of work, and actually selecting the firms for those endeavors. And so, Trans Systems has subsequently put forth a draft, which you folks, I'm sure you've seen, because as we've...Madam Chair, we've gotten a letter, and that letter has been sent on to Trans Systems, so you're aware. So, I will talk to those pieces as I move through. So, does that help with the little background? And I have some kind of next steps as far as where we would be proceeding from here at this juncture.
Yes, and I just...Jim would say, just because sometimes people watch this at home on cable, and they're not as tuned into this as we are, that the Trans System draft report put forward a concept of rerouting freight that would go through St. Louis Park, and so that's part of why you're here today.
Yes, it is, Madam Chair, and I have some slides that I can do my best to talk to them and field any questions as we go through. So, maybe just a little background for those of you who weren't there. We had two town hall meetings in February. We actually started this process off in January before the draft reports were submitted, and we had a town hall meeting in Minneapolis and St. Louis Park to really inform the consultants on what that scope should look like. So, subsequent to that, we received draft reports toward the end of January, and then we held these town hall meetings in the month of February, 10th and 12th. And I'm only going to focus on the freight rail, because I don't think you're too keen to hear about the water resources, but...so essentially with those, just opportunity to ask questions. So, what we had, we had the consultants present their draft work, and in this case, Trans Systems presented their proposal for the reroute of freight rail. We had over 625, all told, with those two town hall meetings, well-attended for the St. Louis Park. I think there was nearly 500 or so at that meeting. And 75 written comments. We're in the process of getting those comments together. We have transcripts of both the town halls, we're getting those together. We will have those publicly available, but we're also going to make those available to our consultants, so they can consider those comments as they're finalizing the report. So, just a couple of images of the town hall meetings. I was actually up part of the board, that we could field questions that really pertain to our design, our work, or any policy level question. So, we had Chair Haig, and Councilmember Dunick, and Councilmember Cunningham, and then Councilmember Munt, and Mark Furman, who is the Program Director of the overall New Startz Projects, which this is one of them, we call it New Startz. That's just an FTA term, a Federal Trans Administration term that we use for these projects. We're looking to get 50% funding ultimately from the FTA on this project. And I was there to field any technical questions. So, let's talk about the scope a little bit, about what Trans Systems was programmed to do, and essentially what they're...what we're looking to have them do, there's been a number of studies, and I don't know if you're all aware, but there's a lot of work that's been done on this question about what to do with freight rail, going back to 1999 as far as official publication. And really, it's been the city of St. Louis Park and/or Hennepin County combined doing, commissioning these reports, and looking at any means possible of getting freight rail essentially from the western portion of the United States, or the western portion of Minnesota, over into St. Paul, because it's essentially where TCNW traffic would want to go. It wants to come out from the west and make its way into St. Paul. And so, part of that work was to look at the DIS, and that includes all the comments. So, we actually gave Trans Systems all the public comments from that, including your letter and the city's letter in that as well. And there are subsequent letters back this summer on the SPO designs that I talked to you all about, and there's a letter from you all in the city that we provided to Trans Systems as well. And then look at the previous studies, look at the work that the project office has done, the SPO, and part of the work that they needed to do is to really sit down and interview, really set out to talk to the railroads, to understand what their operation requirements are. So, they sat down with TCNW, with Canadian Pacific, and BNSF, who is also part of this, and they also talked with UP, because UP, Union Pacific, could potentially be another recipient of a possible reroute, so that's why they were included. But we also had Jim Terry, the lead, talk with the cities and the county to get their perspective. And then there's the draft report which came out, and then we will be getting comments on that. They'll be using those comments to help inform the final report, and there are the presentations I talked of in the town halls. I think all told, they gave the...both independent consultants gave the presentation probably about 10 times within a couple of days, a couple of times with the governor and other policymakers. So, it was well-vetted, I think, in the public arena. So, here are the previous studies. I won't necessarily go through these, and I think maybe who've been following this, you're familiar with these, going back to 1999. But essentially, here's the map of TCNW, and just a kind of a recap of those studies, there are various different routes of trying to get the TCNW traffic through the Twin Cities metro area over into St. Louis Park by other means besides the Kennelworth Corridor, or some of the designs that have been previously looked at, including what SPO, the Southwest Project Office, had put forward. So, here's a map, just a culmination through the area, I think primarily where you're all concerned, where the schools, the high school and the Spanish immersion school are located, in terms of where those routes were suggested. Now, this is the DEIS route, coupled with all of the types, the routes that we had studied during the year of 2013. So, if there are any questions with that, I've got another slide here to super...well, maybe I'll pause here a moment. Essentially, the Trans Systems report identified two viable routes out of all the routes that have been taken a look at, and one is essentially leave it where it is today. Trans Systems has indicated that that's a viable route, it's working fine for TCNW, and so it's certainly a route that could be pursued. The other is the MNES-North Concept, which I have some images that we can talk about here. So, that same image that I showed previous slide, this is just...I've superimposed the Trans Systems in gold of where that alignment would go. And I'll try to use the microphone and use my mouse here to kind of...if I can get hold of my mouse. So, just to get you...whoops. Just to get you oriented, this running down along through here is the Bass Lake Spur, and TCNW currently operates on that line right there. The CP line, the Canadian Pacific MNES line, runs along through here, and goes up by the high school, and then gets up into the neighborhood about 33rd, and heads on up off of the screen up to the north. What Trans Systems had proposed with the MNES-North Concept was to essentially taper off at this location, and in this gold, essentially come off and on, starting on bridge structure to get over Trunk Highway 7, and continuing on bridge structure coming over the XL substation, and then over the Golden Auto Site and linking into the Bass Lake Spur. That's essentially the route, and I have some bigger images of this to show more detail. So, Trans Systems put together five sheets that we've had, and I don't know if you folks had an opportunity to get ahold of these. We do have these in the PowerPoint. We can make them available to you, to print 11-by-17s, or we could provide you hard copies. I think we can arrange that if you'd like to do that. It's just sometimes it's hard to catch the detail on some of these. So, I'm not going to do too much with this particular slide. This is just an overall picture of what it looks like, but I have more detailed images of what it looked like. I think it'd be best to focus on this image right here. And under this design, essentially what Trans Systems is looking to accomplish here is to come up off of the Bass Lake Spur, in this case, north is pointing upward on the screen there, and it would go over the Golden Auto Site. As you can see, it just clips XL substation just south of Trunk Highway 7, and just know that we have sat down with XL, and they are in the process of presumably putting comments together with their impacts that they see. They...we had...we sat down with a number of their engineers with Trans Systems in the room to run by with them what the concept was all about. They didn't really have anything definitive at that meeting, but they indicated they would be providing comments in terms of what kind of impacts they might be dealing with. So, essentially, the line would go over Trunk Highway 7. As we understand the design, the Trunk Highway 7 would have to be lowered by about four feet to accommodate this particular alignment. There would be a new frontage road on the north side of Trunk Highway 7 to allow buses...I think this was a similar request under...when we had worked to try to find some solution in St. Louis Park, that there was desire to have some kind of access under the railroad through here. As you can see, the markings in red, those are essentially where roadways would be closed, and you can see markings in blue with the black border, those are suggested reworking of the roadway network. So, in this case...maybe bear with me a moment, I'll get to the slide here. In this case, Westlake would be closed to traffic, and essentially what would happen here is if you can imagine you're going westbound on Westlake, you get to Library, you essentially take a right turn, and then head up onto that blue new roadway, and then you could take a left and continue on westward. That would be the intent there. Also, Walker would be closed under this proposal as well. And as you can see, your parking that currently exists, it would be contemplated that parking would be continued on over to Library in some fashion. Now, I don't have a lot of the detail behind this as far as how that would all work out, but I think that was the contemplation there.
Can I have a question just on that point? We'd seen briefly some of these maps, I had not seen this particular one. It looked like they were actually making a road through on what is now our parking lot, but is the proposal just to keep it as parking but shift it in some way?
Madam Chair, Board Member Switzer, I...it's my understanding is it would be proposed to be continuation of the parking.
Okay.
So, again, this is Trans Systems' design, so I don't necessarily have all the detail on that, but that was...I've heard Jim Terry give this presentation a couple of times, and that was my understanding, that he was envisioning that to be just extended parking there.
I know you're not the author of this, so these are clarifying questions, other than...
Sure. So, under this proposal, there would be some right-of-way acquisitions required, namely, there's a...I think those of you who were at the Feb. 12 Town Hall Meeting, there was a lot of concern about the Step facility, that the food shelf that would be acquired through this. There's also the Metropolitan Open School, I think it's called, would be also need to be acquired through here as well. Now, just know that I...you know, as far as where the city stands on this, they have expressed similar concerns, as the board has expressed concerns with this alignment. So, I don't want to give the idea the city's endorsed this roadway network, or Trans System hasn't necessarily sat down and worked out, you know, how this whole network could be laid out, but this is a proposal that they put forward. So, if there's any other questions, I'd just kind of add, just as far as the grade, it's intended that this track would essentially get down at grade at Library, so you could cross at that location. So, there wouldn't necessarily be those berms that we had talked about for the Brunswick West and Brunswick Central line, as you recall, I talked about last summer, but that's the intent, to land at grade. And as he proceeds up to the, you know, past that field area, and gets over, paralleling to the school building itself, essentially going to be back onto that existing alignment. There is... So under this proposal, there would be some right-of-way acquisitions required. Namely, there's a, I think those of you who were at the Feb. 12 Town Hall meeting, there was a lot of concern about the STEP facility, that the food shelf that would be acquired through this. There's also the Metropolitan Open School, I think it's called, would be also need to be acquired through here as well. Now, just know that I, you know, as far as where the city stands on this, they have expressed similar concerns as the board has expressed concerns with this alignment. So I don't want to give you the idea the city's endorsed this roadway network or Trans Systems hasn't necessarily sat down and worked out, you know, how this whole network could be laid out, but this is a proposal they put forward. So if there's any other questions, I'd just kind of add, just as far as the grade, it's intended that this track would essentially get down at grade at Library, so you could cross at that location. So there wouldn't necessarily be those berms that we had talked about for the Brunswick-West and Brunswick-Central alignments, you recall, I talked about last summer, but that's the intent to land at grade. And as he proceeds up to the, you know, past that field area and gets over, paralleling to the school building itself, essentially going to be back onto that existing alignment. There is new track proposed through this whole stretch, so that all the track would be replaced with continuous welded rail under this proposal.
So as the train is coming, and will the trains go east and west on this track?
Madam Chair, that is correct, because TCNW, essentially today, they operate a train of their own every day, seven days a week, and that's usually a train into St. Paul and a train back out. And that's usually typically in the morning timeframe around 8:00, but it does vary, and then they come back in around, you know, it could be 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at night. But they also run unit trains. On average, our conversations with TCNW, they run unit trains anywhere from about 5 to 6 on average per week. And a unit train is essentially a full locomotive set and car set that doesn't get broken up at all, and they take that over from BNSF or UP or CP to run on this particular line, because the other railroads don't necessarily have operational rights to this particular track on the Bass Lake Spur and the Kennelworth. So they hire TCNW to take these unit trains within a certain period of time, and they get notification within 24 hours or so, it's around there, and they have to get that train from Point A to Point B through the metro area. And so that comes at any time, so that could be 2:00 a.m., that could be a 2:00 p.m. run, and it's just on average 5 to 6.
And aren't they talking, though, about more trains and longer trains on this freight rail? That's what I've heard, that the industry is getting to have longer trains. I thought I read the president say upward of 100 cars and some concerns from the railway president about the curves on this reroute.
Yes, Madam Chair, as we understand Twin Cities and Western's operations, they have a train now, I think it's a maximum 113 cars, one of those unit trains. And I guess as an industry, going back, I forget what Mark Wagner says as far as what time period, but maybe when they first located in Kennelworth Corridor back in the late 80s, I think, is when that occurred, in the, maybe it was in the 90s. I don't have my dates specific, but he indicated the unit trains weren't really a big thing at that time, and they've grown in the industry. The Class Ones, the BNSF, CP, and UP, they have determined that to run these unit trains is more cost-effective for them to do so, so they are fairly long trains. So the TCNW trains, in contrast, I think those run from 50 to 70 cars, depending on what they have to carry that particular trip. But these unit trains can run up into the 100. Now, in terms of the number of trains, I don't know exactly what the capacity is, because I would just mention that when TCNW operates their train through this whole system going into St. Paul, they have to get permission along the way at several points to get on track. For example, on the Kennelworth Corridor, or if there was going to be a relocate through St. Louis Park, they have to get permission to get on the BNSF, why is that a subdivision, which is north of here? And so they have to get permission on that track, then they have to get permission from Minnesota Commercial when they get into Minneapolis, then they have to get permission from the UP as they're into St. Paul. So as a function, there's only so many trains that can go through here, but I haven't heard that what that capacity is. As to your second question, there is a memo out from Twin Cities and Western's consultant that had made some, had raised some questions and some concerns with the Trans Systems design. And if you don't all have that letter, I believe it is posted on TCNW's website, and we could certainly provide that. I don't know if we're posting that on our site at all. Yeah, so we shared that with our committee, so it'd be posted on our site, swlrt.org as well. But TCNW, pretty easy to find there as well. But there's about a five-page memo that Civil Design did the work for Mark Wagner and TCNW. But they've essentially expressed that a lot of concern with the reverse curves, similar to, as I've heard them, similar concerns with the DEIS. We had a design we first proposed called the MNS Modified, where we tried to take care of some of the concerns, but the railroads still said that that was unacceptable. They're still finding that this design is on the similar vein, as I understand it.
So on that note, has there been any talk, because we know what we've been hearing is that because of the, the trains have a lot of influence and power in this, and that if they say this route isn't going to work, any, what's the Met Council thinking about doing? Are they going to cost it out? Does it change their timeframe? What's the impact of what we learned like last Friday?
Well, Madam Chair, Board Member Yaros, I would answer it this way, that for anything to happen in terms of a relocate, the existing track needs to be abandoned. And for that abandonment to occur, there's a certain process that needs to take place with the Surface Transportation Board. We're actually meeting with the Surface Transportation Board and the cities and county later this week to make sure everybody's on the same page as far as what that process is. But as I understand it, as we've been advised with our experts in this arena, is that the railroads need to petition for that abandonment of tracks. So that would mean TCNW and CP would need to petition for that abandonment. Then the STB would make some kind of action. They may say it's, just wave and say, yeah, it's fine, we'll go ahead and allow the abandonment, or they may want to have a hearing. It depends on the process of how that takes place. But for, in my mind, for the railroads to petition, they essentially need to endorse the plan. So that's something that is part of the process. As we look at this work, and I have kind of a next step slide, maybe I could reserve that as far as how we look at the process playing out here. All right.
So you're talking about timeline and lowering Highway 7, and aren't there some timeline constraints to even do the LRT? So how would that then be impacted? And where's all the mitigation money going to come from for this? Has that been costed out yet?
Madam Chair, Board Member Waters, I would say to the mitigation, there's been an estimate put forth by Trans Systems of, it's in the range of $112 million. That is in 2013 dollars, and it doesn't include right-of-way. We had taken an exercise, essentially taking their estimate and building it up, so to speak, so we can get it up to a year of expenditure, because this expenditure wouldn't happen until 2016 or 2017. As we get through design, we get into construction to award contracts to constructors. And it also, it takes into account how FTA looks at costing. So we wanted to keep it on an equivalent basis, how we've costed the rest of the project. And so that number, if you could bear with me, I've got it here. Frankly, I've got a little too much paperwork in my... That number is on the line of $220 to $240 million. That, taking that $112 million and essentially escalating it up to year of expenditure and adding the proper contingencies. We have also identified some elements that aren't necessarily in that cost that we're currently evaluating to determine how much that would be. So just know that we're thinking that cost is around 220 to 240, but it could be higher than that in terms of those other elements. There is one mitigation that we are, we've asked XL to come back with their comments to give us an idea of what cost it would be to deal with the technical issues of this line going over their substation. But in terms of other mitigations, I'm not sure if you're referring to some specifics, but it doesn't necessarily include mitigation for taking other houses, for example. I'll just go back to the city had expressed under any relocation alignment, they had indicated at one point that maybe a row of houses need to be taken out along the alignment north of 33rd. It doesn't include something like that. It does not.
So the mitigation number does not include the taking of any necessary properties or compensating the school district for any vibration sound or other safety issues that we might have? Is that fair to say?
Madam Chair, on the first point, the right-of-way, there is a, we have taken a part upon ourselves to understand what the right-of-way impacts are. We got in agreement with Jim Terry and Trans Systems on that, and we costed that using the same methodology, but we, there is, so that is in the estimate. There is no number in there to deal with any vibration impacts if that were termed to be needed.
Is there a timeframe for when these other mitigation factors get to be added into the analysis and costs found or at least considered?
Madam Chair, I think maybe getting back to the next steps, I could talk to that process, how that could walk through, and maybe it'd be best if...
Why don't you hold that one thought before we get that? Does this plan, and when I heard Mr. Perry speak in the high school here at the public forum I was at, my memory is that he said that this has not been really, to me, I heard it as a concept. It hasn't been engineered, that's the word. It's sort of a concept, and he could be off somewhat in the footage on the layout here, and it sounded like that was that conceptual. So having said that, as it is, as you understand it now, and I know it's not your plan, does this contemplate taking any property from the school district?
Madam Chair, it does contemplate taking some property, particularly if that there would be some access at that parking area, I'm sure, that we would need to sort out. It's just...
The side of the school?
Yeah, just over here.
It's where the track runs about 75 feet from our classroom, and you want to, you need some of that property, it sounds like to...
Yes, yeah, I think there is, I think there's some property involved there.
You know, and we're a public entity, so we're using that property for a public purpose, so I don't know if there will be issues with respect to that, just so you're alerted to that.
Yes, well understood. Thank you. All right, well, I do have other images of the alignment. This is just showing the southerly connector. As we had talked, any alignment that we look for freight, whether it's co-locate that shallow LRT tunnel or any relocation, we had contemplated having a southerly connector. And the reason being is that we would look to, our current plan shows that we would swap the LRT with the Bass Lake Spur. So on the south side of the corridor where the Bass Lake Spur runs today, LRT would be located on that side, and whether it's a relocate or a co-locate, we would have freight north of that. So that essentially severs the connection that exists to get down to the Switching Y, which is just east of the MNS. And I think, is everybody aware of that, that particular Switching Y that I'm talking about? Okay. So with the disconnection of that, we would have to establish a southerly connector. So like our designs, Trans Systems is proposing a southerly connector to accomplish that. This next image is, just carries it up through the existing alignment, and it makes its way up to the Iron Triangle and onto the BNSF, which is that line running up and down and heading into Minneapolis. So essentially, that's pretty close to the current alignment, but there would be adjustments in grade to accomplish that design. So part of this process, and you've already submitted some comments, you're welcome to submit more, we have the comment period extending to March 3, and as I indicated, we will be transmitting all of those comments to Trans Systems, and we've already transmitted your letter that we received from the Town Hall meeting. And so that will be part of their, part of the record and part of the items that Trans Systems will need to consider when finalizing the report. So the next steps would be then to finalize that report. We don't have a specific date, it really kind of depends on how many comments we get on what they need to take care of, but essentially, we're looking sometime mid-March to have that. And we would look to go back to our corridor management committee. We just presented to them last week on this issue. Jim Terry presented his alignment to the corridor management committee a few weeks ago, and so we were just back again to continue the dialogue. But at some point, and I don't have specific dates for you, but it would be hoped that in the April timeframe, we could make a decision on which way to go. Now, as you point out, Madam Chair, if it turns out to be that the policymakers decide that, yes, we ought to pursue the MNS-North concept, we need to do more engineering to do that, and we can't just do that overnight. And I think we told the corridor management committee it might take three to four months to get that up to sufficient speed so we can understand the details. But the corridor management committee is slated to make some decisions on which way to go, and there's a lot of factors that they're considering. They're considering safety, they're considering right-of-way implications, they're considering costs, and they're also considering operations. So part of that safety piece is proximity of schools. And I think as Trans Systems identified, there's obviously the high school that's within 150 feet. Now, he just took 150 feet as a range, but there's also the open school that's within range, within that range as well. We did our own exercise to validate that and essentially came up with the same numbers. Also looked at crossings. There are currently six crossings under the MNS-North, and there are four crossing under the Kennelworth Corridor through this stretch we're talking about. Under the proposal of Trans Systems, there would be down to two crossings. Essentially, on that last map I showed you, they are proposing to close off 27th or 28th and 29th and create a new undercrossing at 27th, which would go under the tracks. And under the Kennelworth Corridor, essentially, it would stay at four crossings. So those kind of factors are going to play a part, and you know, the right-of-way, we're looking at on the order of about, I think, 14 or so entities that have to be relocated, and under the Kennelworth Corridor, there would be none. We essentially have some right-of-way impacts, but nothing that would require people to relocate. So I'll just pause there for a moment.
You know, Jim, thank you. You know, do you want to say something to each other first?
Again, when does the mitigation get considered in this process? Is it only after, well, when?
Well, Madam Chair, Board Member Schweitzer, I would say that as we move, say we're going to move forward with a MNS-North, we will get that design developed and we'll understand those costs a little more. As we go through the environmental process, we'll get those mitigations identified through that environmental process. This would be part of a supplemental draft environmental impact statement where people could comment like you all did on the DEIS, and then ultimately, a final environmental impact statement would look to identify those mitigation measures that need to be taken care of. Similarly, if we go down to a Kennelworth Corridor route, we would have the same process.
So do those get costed out and committed to during this process, or are they just, the mitigation, or do they just identified as issues at that point?
What this, Madam Chair, Board Member Schweitzer, what this culminates into is a record of decision that would be issued by the FTA, and that essentially sets in place what needs to be mitigated. So that would be, that would have to be part of the project if it's in that record decision.
If I understand what you said so far right, is that they would make the policy decision that they might want the MNS-North before you fully engineered the project? Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair, Board Member Yaros, that is correct, that we would be looking to get a decision on which way to head. Now, you know, if we go down a route with MNS-North, and I'm just kind of trying to project ahead, and we come up with some fatal flaws, we're doing the engineering, we'll certainly have to bring that about. I mean, that's the whole process of doing more engineering.
Well, that was kind of my question. They kind of make the policy decision, as I understand it, this has been about 5% engineered, so they make the policy decision, but as you engineer this out fully, you're going to find a bunch more stuff, impacts, that you think with that would affect the original decision. That's what I'm saying. Does that, is that typical, that you would engineer something 5%, make a decision on that, and then when you then go fully engineered? I mean, it just seems...
Right. Well, Madam Chair, Board Member Yaros, I would answer it this way, is that as we proceed on these projects, there's a lot of checks as we move through. And our first check is municipal consent, where we get a set of plans together, and up to that point, we've been working with the cities and the county, whoever's affected by this particular plan, and look for their approval. And once we get that in place, that sets the stage to get 30% drawings done. And part of that, while that's going on, if there's been a significant change, as we would say with a freight rail, if it's a relocate, that supplemental DEIS gets published, so there's a vetting with the public of that design, and then we would move on to 30% and get to the FEIS. There's a lot of checks... There's a lot of checks as we move through here, and, and to, to make sure that we've identified things accordingly, because we don't want to be stuck with a, a particular component of the project where we haven't appropriately costed out. By the time we're in final engineering, we need to have that identified, and that's really getting to fine tuning. And I would just say for this M and S North, you know, there's, there's work to be done if we're already going to pursue that, but the general alignment would assume to be where it is if we're going to head down that route. We would just need to understand the grades, how's that going to work, and, and like in the XL substation, for example, how do we, how do we handle clearances there, Trump Highway 7, or how do we handle clearances there? We know that there's a current construction project going on, and how is that going to mix with the, what's contemplated here? So there's a lot of, there's just a lot of moving pieces that need to get culminated together as we move through the process.
So did I hear, what, what decision then do you think is being made in April?
Madam Chair, we would, we would hope that we could get a decision on moving forward with the project's scope and budget.
Meaning one way or the other? Stay in Kennelworth or do the reroute? Is that the decision you're hoping, you're anticipating in April?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's, that is correct. And I would add that C Tib, the county's transit improvement board, just issued a letter last week to our chair indicating that they, they have indicated that we need to get a decision globally on this by the 30th of June.
Or some of the money goes away.
I don't know the, I don't remember, recall the specifics of the letter, but essentially, they would make, they may look for other projects to fund at that, at that point.
Just a couple of points that I would make. One of our concerns also, in addition to the ones you, the factors you considered, vibration, safety, sound, environment, those factors, is education. And as our letter in detail spelled out, we have some concerns that if this reroute happens so close to our high school with the sound and the vibration and the, and the number of trains, I believe there was an engineer who said that, either going fast or slowing down, that that will have a, if you add up all the minutes of the impact, that's a lot of impact on the educational learning in the classroom, which is a concern to us. And I think some of our operational concerns during the whole, the double whammy construction, if you were to go forward, because if you go forward with the reroute, we get stuck with the impact of the construction of that, which is going to play havoc with our transportation and our costs. And then when you get around to doing the light rail, that too, construction period is going to play havoc with our transportation back and forth across those lines and our costs. So there's a, there's a real double whammy impact to us because the costs that come up, that are needed for those efficiencies come out of our classroom, essentially. So we have, as you know, some major educational concerns as well as the other ones you've listed. We know you didn't talk about the water study, and that's good, but what I do want to say about the water study is, the water study showed that you can do what you're proposing in the Kennelworth corridor and not have a negative impact on the lakes, and that's important to all of us, and so I thought that study was very reassuring. And just so people at home know, our letter, which is on our website, really communicated to the Met Council, and I know this isn't your study, Jim, that we really strongly oppose this reroute idea for a whole host of reasons listed in our letter, and I think some of them have been, if not said, certainly inferred in our questions here.
Again, I reiterate what Nancy said, we realize it's not your study, but we do think it's one of the, well, it passes any test of sanity that I have ever seen. It's just beyond me how, how you can come in here, and we have said time and time again that the safety of our students is our number one concern, and to run that many freight trains by one of the best high schools in the country, one of the best high schools in Minnesota, in the top 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5th, and then to go and destroy a community by running freight trains through the middle of it, it's beyond the pale to me. I, I just don't understand it, and I, I don't understand the mitigation, there's not going to be any money for mitigation, you know that. If they're going to take out houses, they're going to, we're not going to get vibration mitigation, the, the tracks, and all of the accidents that have been, happened over the last year, and you're going to run this 80 feet from our high school and right in between our high school and one of the best schools in the country? I mean, this is just, we're, we're just surprised by this whole thing and the direction that it's going. And we, I, I just can't say how much we oppose this. I mean, we've said it in our letter, I, I don't know how else to say it, but we are so opposed to this thing, it's difficult to be civil as we oppose it.
But we're going to be.
Well, that brings you back to my original question, then, the, the impact of the TC&amp;W saying we don't support the reroute, we're saying, we see your location, we see your proposal, we don't support it, don't, isn't it that, I always was under the understanding that the, that that had to, you had to, that they had to sign off on it essentially, the railroad, the M and S, M and N S.
Yes, Madam Chair, Board Member Yaros, I, as I indicated earlier, is my understanding, this is, and this is a, there's a point of, you know, different perspectives from others within the community of, of looking at this, but from what I understand, what the project office understands is that the railroads essentially need to endorse a relocation plan. There is a existing line through the Kennelworth corridor, and even the segmented line that would be severed going up through the Kennelworth corridor, that's owned by CP, and Hick, and Hickra owns the, the piece that goes through the Kennelworth corridor, the Hanover County Regional Railroad Authority. It's the, it's the, the carriers, the railroad carriers that go through that, on that track, would need to petition to the Surface Transportation Board for that abandonment of track, and so thereby, if they're going to...
They won't abandon track unless they're satisfied with a reroute.
Yes, I'm just talking about the process, so, so if they're, if they were going to abandon that, agree to abandon that track, they have to, in my mind, they have to endorse the, the reroute.
Which they haven't done, so why are they going to...
Why are we...
Why is it dead on, why is it not dead on arrival then? If they've already said, we've seen that plan, we see where it doesn't work for us, even though it's only been 5% engineered, it's not going to get any better, that's where the route is, you said, so how does it go forward at this point?
Madam Chair, Board Member Yaros, to be fair, there are others, project partners who believe otherwise, and as I indicated, we are slated to have some meetings this week to hopefully clarify that, that question. I'll just put out forward that Met Council, we're not freight rail builders, we're, we do LRT, and we acquired the freight rail through this project. The FTA said, you shall solve this problem if you're going to get an LRT system up and running, so we've been working to, to do that, and we hired experts to understand the STB situation, and that's our understanding to, that the railroads need to endorse it, submit a petition to abandon the track to the STB. STB will ultimately make the call, but, but, but you have to have that railroad piece to do that, and there are some folks, our project partners, some project partners who don't, do not believe that that's the, the course that needs to be taken, or has to be taken.
Who would those partners be? Because if they're not the railroad, and the railroad has this trump card, unless I'm misunderstanding, they're influencing this whole process, I don't, you know, I don't understand, you know, I mean, if it's Minneapolis is one of the partners who says, oh, we disagree, but the, the railroad says otherwise, and we're the, they're the ones who have to petition for the abandonment, how does it go any further?
That's a very good question.
Well said, Jim.
Something we're hoping to get resolved.
Jim, thank you very much for coming and taking your time here and, and telling us what you know and being clear about what is still in process, and for hearing our concerns, we appreciate that.
Yes, Madam Chair, well, I'd just like to offer, we, you're welcome to come back if you, if you desire, just let Sophia know, and we always like to keep the, the dialogue going.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So next on our agenda is the school calendar discussion, and this is going to be for the 2014-2015 school calendar, so that's our coming school year, and it's our preliminary conversation to begin to kick this topic off, and we're going to hear from Superintendent Metz.
Thank you. Can I have a little bit real quick? Sorry. Thank you. Good evening, board members. I'm here to introduce a quick discussion about the 2014-2015 calendar. You have a copy in front of you. We need to make an adjustment to the calendar because there were a couple of errors in the, in the approved version of the 2014-2015 calendar. I want to talk about those corrections that need to be made first, and then introduce a new topic. As long as we're changing the calendar anyway for next year, I have a proposal I'd like you to consider. And by the way, tonight's discussion is just a discussion, we're going to be back here on March 10th to ask your approval of a new 2014-2015 calendar. So the first corrections that need to be made are the, next September, because we have all-day kindergarten, the first day of kindergarten, we're proposing to be September 3rd, the second day of school. Historically, kindergarten has started with two days of parent-teacher-student conferences because we had half-day kindergarten. And if you're a half-day kindergarten teacher, that means you have 22 students in the morning and 22 students in the afternoon, 44 students, and you needed two days to do your parent-teacher-student conferences. Now that we'll have all-day kindergarten next year, we really only need one day to do that because each teacher will only have one class of 22 students, so they should be able to do their conferences in one day. So the first change that you'll see there would be starting kindergarten on the second day of school, September 3rd. The second change that needed to be made had to do with Thanksgiving, we just had accidentally put Thanksgiving in the wrong week, so we fixed that, now we have Thanksgiving in the correct week. So those are the two changes that were going to be coming to you for the 2014-15 calendar. I've added one more consideration, and this is from the recommendation of Kerry Ross and our professional learning committee of teachers, and we are recommending a change in the, the traditional late start, early release days for you to consider. The last few years, we have had eight early release or late start days, four early release days and four late start days. The recommendation is to switch to only having two early release, late start days, and then take two full days for our professional learning. So in the calendar that you're looking at, the, under this proposal, the late start day would be October 20th, the early release day would be May 18th, and then there would be two full days used for professional development where students would not attend school, December 5th and March 23rd. By organizing the teacher professional learning this way, there are some definite advantages. There might be a few disadvantages, but I think they're almost all advantages, and I would list as some of the key advantages is that we would be able to bring our teachers together K-12, or actually, pre-K-12. That's been one of our issues on the early release late start days, is because our schools stop and start at, at all different times, it's very difficult to bring middle school teachers and high school teachers together, it's very difficult to bring PSI teachers and Susan Lindgren teachers together, because by the time they meet, they have very little time to be together. If we could have two full days where we had access to every staff member, not just teachers, but paraprofessionals and support staff of all kinds, it would give us a greater opportunity to get a lot more work done on those two days. It would also cause less time for student lives to be interrupted. Those early release late start days can be difficult at times because we end up with shortened class periods at the secondary level, a different schedule at the elementary level, and sometimes I question the amount of the learning that happens on those days. Reducing those interrupted days from eight days down to two days, I think, would actually be a benefit. Kerry Ross has taken this proposal through the, the teacher-led professional learning committee, the, the professional learning leaders across the district, they support it. I'm in the process with Kerry of taking it through, be vetted by other stakeholders. We haven't completed that process yet, but we'll have that process completed by our next board meeting on March 10th, and I'm hoping to be back here at that time with a recommendation for an adjusted 2014-2015 calendar. So with that, I will stop and try to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Excuse me, I think the suggestions here make sense. My, one of my questions was whether it had been discussed with teachers, and what you just said of having gone through the teacher professional learning community group, I know it's not a PLC itself, but that's, that's very helpful, and if, if it's going to be more effective use of time, it seems to be a little bit of the best of both worlds, you know, missing all day is hard for some parents, early release late starts harder for other parents, there are different educational values, so that's fine. I just want to, my second question is though, on a different issue, after about, you know, more than 15 years of never having a day off, we've had six days off this winter, and winter isn't over yet. Can we anticipate that? I don't think we had reason to anticipate it for this year, but now we have reason to anticipate days off, cold or, or snow. Can we build that into the calendar? How much leeway do we have? That kind of thing.
Yep, that's an excellent question, and I will bring that back. That's some of the work that we can do over the next two weeks, is to try to consider possible snow day, cold day interruptions for next year, and have those days identified and built into this calendar.
Or it may just mean having enough days there that we can miss two days and still, all-day kindergarten will solve it for kindergarteners, unless the state changes the requirement, which they could. But having enough days built in that missing two days isn't going to affect, I don't, I don't know, but just maybe having enough built in as well as perhaps the alternative plan if we do miss snow days.
Yep, very good question, and as you know, the, the key groups that are causing us some headache this year, but for missing schools, school days are the kindergartners and also the seniors. So I'm, I'm taking your suggestion, and we'll go back and look at both of those groups especially.
This may be more for Lisa, but community ad, you know, I know we try to give notice, early release, late start, to say, hey, there's something you can do with your kids. Do we have, you know, whether it be space issues, or, you know, if we're all day, or have you examined that by going, by eliminating the late start, early release, and having two full days, what the impact might be and what we would do?
We would just build that into our, if it's next year, we can build that into our schedule for next year. No, it wouldn't be a problem.
Okay, so we will, Nancy, excuse me?
Yeah, Rob, I just was checking my calendar, and I think you, if we're talking about the calendar and the 10th and educational focus, maybe at that time you could also tell us a little bit about what our principals are doing to kind of capitalize on the time we have this year, since we've missed days and there, you know, are we making any adjustments with the time we already have as opposed to make up days to, to enhance the learning and the time that we have? And if we are, it'd be good to hear about that.
Thank you, I'll bring that back as well. You're welcome.
We are now up to the consent agenda, and I will note on the consent agenda, there is one retirement, two? Oh. It's interesting, we have two retirements, but they don't show up next to each other, which, I don't know if there's a way to fix that in the layout or not going forward, but I do want to acknowledge the two retirements that we have, and one is Bonnie Bogan, and she's an ECSE specialist. Is there anyone here? We're, we're short on our cabinet staff for a variety of reasons... We're short on our cabinet staff for a variety of reasons. A variety of reasons. But I simply want to thank, we want to thank Bonnie for all her service to the district. And she'll be retiring at the end of the year. The other retirement we have on the consent agenda is Marcy Edgar. She's a grade-level coordinator at the high school, and she's retiring after 25 years of service at the end of the year. We just really, really want to thank Marcy. I don't know if you can speak to her at all, Rob? Edgar Marcy. Thank you.
Yes. Marcy Edgar has been a wonderful employee for many, many years at the high school. We're going to miss not seeing her around in the hallways. It's Marcy, yep. And her relative, Miriam, is our wonderful orchestra director. So there's a connection there. And I'm sure we'll see Marcy back at all of the orchestra concerts for many years to
Thanks, Rob. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Karen's? Any opposed? Karen's 5-0. We have nothing on our action agenda, so we are now up to communications and transmittals. Karen?
Thank you. So every week now, I've been talking about assets. Children-first assets are really important in our community. And we're going to talk about asset number seven tonight, community values youth. And I'd like to invite as many people who can to attend the Children's First Asset Champions Breakfast on Friday, March 21st. It's at 7:00 a.m. at the Doubletree Park Place Hotel. It ends at 8:15, and they are very good about starting on time and ending on time. But the theme is every child needs a champion, and we want to expand our asset champion network so that when we have volunteers working with our kids, they're being intentional about a particular asset that they are focusing on. So if you have any interest, please take a look. It's on the Children First website, www.children-first.org. I don't know if it's going to be on the district website or not. Is it, Sarah? Possibly. But anyway, March 21st. Plenty of time to sign up. Thank you.
I have one. I have in my hand a wonderful book. It's called Teacher Top Five. And I have not yet had a chance to read it, but one of the chapters in it is from our own Leanne Stevens, who was a Teacher of the Year, Minnesota statewide. We're so, so proud of that. And continues to do amazing work throughout our district, but has been focused in the high school lately. And Leanne, if I get this wrong, tell me, but I understand it, that several Teachers of the Year were interviewed and asked what were the top five teaching strategies they used to make their teaching effective. Not everybody's strategies got included, but Leanne's did. And so we're very proud, and I'm really looking forward to reading the book. And I'm going to start with Leanne's chapter. All right. That wraps it up. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Bruce?
Second.
Second by Julie. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.